All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our budget session. This evening, we're going to do the same format as we did at the prior sessions. We'll hold wait till the end of the presentations for questions. There will be an opportunity for resident questions. We're going to begin with Mary Ann Malagon, Library Director on the library, followed by Paul Blake, Chairman, Board of Commissions of Cultural and Recreational Affairs, followed by Irene Wu, our Village Treasurer, with a summary of budget changes. So, thank you for joining, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Wu first.
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor. I will just introduce the Library Director, Ms. Mary Ann Malagon, who will start on the library's budget.
Thank you. Thank you, Irene. Good evening. Thank you to the mayor and the Village Board of Trustees for allowing me to present the library's tentative operating and capital budgets for the 24-25 year. Thank you very much to the Library Board of Trustees, especially Chairman Randy Colahan and the Budget Committee, Trustees McGuire and Foley, for their guidance on this budget. I also want to thank the Assistant Director, Ralph Cato, to my right, and to the library staff, to the Friends of the Library who contributed over $50,000 in 23-24 year for program funds and furniture, as well as their own programs, and a special thank you to all our residents for your support and interest in the library. I'd like to thank Irene Wu and the Finance Department staff for their assistance in preparing this budget, and to Ralph Swazi for his help regarding their technology points, which I will refer to later. I also especially appreciate all the assistance from all of the other department heads throughout the year and our points related to the budget. The library has been very successful in collaborating with the village on many projects in the past five years, my tenure. We've invested in the building, the infrastructure, the security and life safety systems, the grounds, and there's more to come. But tonight, I want to talk about investing in the services we're providing to our patrons, how to expand and enhance those resources to meet the needs and expectations of our residents. Thank you. First, our request for the operating budget. Under salary-related benefits and taxes, we're requesting an additional Librarian I to help expand our programs and services to residents. The request is partially as a result of a retirement of a Librarian II. This makes it possible for us to hire an additional Librarian at a much smaller net increase in the salary. Our librarians provide hands-on computer assistance, readers advisory and research service, and create and conduct popular and original programs. Programs created by our librarians include tween programming, Duplo Lego block programs for preschoolers starting at ages one and a half, our pumpkin and egg scavenger hunts, and Locked-in-the-Library Halloween Party have been award winners, and this year, our teen librarian added a jigsaw puzzle tournament and was invited to speak on a statewide conference call about it. Our children's librarians are now reading eBooks during storytime on the new smart board in the renovated children's room, and conducting science programs in the new STEAM workshop. We really want to increase our programs and services to the community. Also, as previously mentioned by Mr. Swazi, the village would like to hire an additional information technology aide II, which would be allocated at 20% to the library at a cost of $10,000-plus benefits. This will support our technology needs and collaboration with the village. More on this later. Under the third-party services line, you'll see two important increases that are requests for the library. $23,000 in special program services to supplement our library programs for all patrons, such as bringing in an expert speaker or a specialty programmer to help expand our offerings and the number of sessions we offer. This amount will nearly double our current programming funds. The Friends of the Library generously provided $24,000 just for programs and related costs in '23-24, in addition to their own programs they provided at no cost. However, this is far less than other nearby libraries are receiving for their programs, to their residents. We would like to raise the bar and provide more to village residents. Technology. We're requesting $56,000 for a one-year contract with SourcePass to help us optimize our network and reach our goals with technology projects and services. We began, or I should say extended, a successful collaboration with them and the village, starting in February, and look forward to continuing. We recently have experienced two separate server disruptions in the past few weeks, and these challenges were greatly assisted by Ralph Swazi, Ryan Sheehan, and the SourcePass team. We think it is essential that we continue to collaborate with them next year. It was Ralph's suggestion that we add the village information tech aide as well. In our revenue budget, there are only a few variances. The recognition of a $30,000 gift to the library, which will be used towards our meeting room project, the interest revenue, which is due to the higher interest rates this past year, and the contribution from the general fund. Our existing capital projects. Been a busy time. We're up to 10 now, which is great. We're very thrilled with those numbers. Technology. We're not asking for any new funds this year because we're going to introduce working with SourcePass and discuss what our needs and projects should be. Our entrance doors has a contractors' meeting scheduled on Monday, April 1st. The grounds improvement has, we've got a new sign on our corner of Hilton and Sevens, and a bench we delivered on Monday. Kiosk repairs are progressing, and there's more steps in that project as well. The HVAC project is waiting for delivery of air handler units in the cooling tower, and then we'll begin. Fire alarm installation is being planned. Security alarm, we are reviewing a revised proposal for signature. The roof repair project is currently doing metal work and inspections, and close to concluding. The meeting rooms and the computer rooms project, we're evaluating doing as a joint project and planning preliminary designs in the very near future. And the teen room will be assessed after we look at the lower level. In addition to those 10 projects, we only have one new project asked in the upcoming year, which is to extend the new carpeting that we replaced on the first floor in the children's and circulation area throughout the rest of the main level. As we look ahead, we're engaging with our local legislators, as well as those in Albany and Washington, to pursue funding opportunities. We received a $10,000 check just today from Legislative Aid from Senator Thomas. Next week, I will be traveling to Columbus, Ohio for the National Public Library Association Conference to come back with new ideas to help take our library to the next level. And the following week, on April 8th, you'll be able to come to the library to celebrate National Library Week, watch the hatching of the chicks, or one of our favorite events of the year, and the solar eclipse, for which we will have a limited supply of eclipse glasses. We're looking forward to the next chapter in the upcoming year. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
Did you, Edward, did you have a question? You sure? Okay. All right. Could you define Librarian II as opposed to a Librarian I?
In the strictest civil service terms, it basically requires a minimum of two additional years of ton of job experience, as well as supervisory components to the work. In our library, we currently have, I think, five, computer, children's, young adult, and adult services. Oh, and a retired physician. So, we're looking at the entry level and have those people do the more of the frontline work and develop new ideas and projects and working with the patrons. But the Librarian I's also perform all of those vital services as well, as well as, in addition to making more leading decisions.
Okay, and the Librarian I would not do all of that?
No, the librarians, they're really, sometimes it's so seamless, you really can't tell who's a Librarian I versus a Librarian II. They might make, you know, scheduling decisions, overall project and program decisions for their department. They collaborate on a, like, a more managerial level. But even our Librarian I's, especially on a night or a weekend, they might be the supervising librarian in charge because we want everybody to be able to assess the needs if there's a problem in a Librarian I administration isn't there.
Okay, so you're replacing the Librarian II with a Librarian I. The Librarian II, that's retiring.
Yes.
You replace it with a I. But then you want another new Librarian on top of that?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and based on salary and benefits, would it balance out? Or we're going to have an addition on that?
So, the starting rate for the Librarian I salary is about 62, and the net increase on the salary line is about 15,000 to have two Librarians I's starting at approximately the same time. We're actually currently in the middle of the interviews for the Librarian I for the current replacement. So, we haven't replaced that position yet. There's actually been a space in that, in that line since January.
So, the Librarian II would make 62,000, did you say?
62,400, I believe.
Right, and so the Librarian I would make 45 something?
No, I'm sorry. That's the Librarian I salary. Librarian II was at the top of their scale.
Okay.
Somebody with a lot of years of service, so they were making about 110.
Okay, and so then we'd, so then we'd have two Librarian I's at about 62,000 each, is what you're saying? So, and the Librarian I would be 100, okay. Okay. Thank you.
Third part, services. Do you track attendance and how do you think about that?
That's a great question. Actually, yes, for our library programs. So, for those at home, trustee Finneran was asking for tracking the attendance at our programs. And yes, that is the case. We always take attendance counts at our programs, and we report them monthly in our library board reports. Actually, the Assistant Director handles and oversees that information. And over the past couple of years, as we've been charged with bringing our programs back to pre-COVID levels, we've been comparing ourselves favorably to 2019. So, we are offering more programs and services than we were in 2019, consistently on a month-to-month basis, and looking to expand to a higher level than that.
Excellent. This is more geared toward, toward the treasurer. I don't think I asked this question last year. I was in the audience. How does the transfer work? And I would imagine it's, is it on a monthly basis? And exactly where does it come from?
The transfer meaning the contribution from the general fund to the library, correct? Okay, so, the calculation of the contribution to the library takes into account the library's request for the upcoming fiscal year, and then we deduct any surplus they may have from the current year or prior years. So, because the surplus they have are prior year's contributions that remained unspent, we deduct that first before contributing any additional funds. So, the line item you see in the revenue side for the library is the net number that's needed to fund their requests for their operating expenses in the following year. The way the transfer works is, starting June 1st, if the board adopts this budget, we will transfer the full amount to the library's account, starting June 1st. And it's a transfer of cash between the banking accounts, and it goes to the library from the general fund. And these funds are taxpayer funds, right, that are funding the library.
Totally understood.
Yep.
And prior to your presentation tonight, Mary Ann, I would imagine you come up with a big number of what it's going to take to run the library for the year, correct? Before you determine what the, what the transfer from the general fund is going to be, or what your ask is going to be.
So, I really tend to do it more on a line-by-line basis. That's what the individual needs are, and the big number comes at the end.
Right.
And then the contribution is, as Irene said, I basically sit there and build an expenditures bucket, and I say, "Okay, is my staffing on par? Do I need more in library materials? Do I need more for software?" And then, when that bottom number is there, and I add my revenues to it, then there's a calculation page that the Finance Department prepares, which takes into account those surpluses.
Got it.
And that's when we know what the contribution will be. It's usually the last number I, we figure out in the budget.
That's right, and we also assist the library with figuring out the benefits and taxes, right? Because that's allocated, that's, you know, we calculate village-wide. We calculate, calculate what that is, the health, the dental, the retirement. And so, we work with the library to provide those numbers for those employees.
Got it. Thank you very much. And then one final question with regard to expenditures for capital projects out in '26-27. Are those numbers based on, you know, what kind of estimates are they based on? I know that that can change, but just as a, as a point of education.
Last year's budget hearing, I worked with H2M using the measurements of the space that they had in the plans that they were using for the children's project to assess the square footage. And then, based on the type of renovation we would expect in that space, estimated, using like a calculator factor, to calculate the plot then. And then, for this year's budget, I believe I rounded it up by maybe 10% or so. That was a couple months ago. But it's a soft number, which we know may see some change, especially as we try to develop the project to meet the, meet the right needs and efficiency. And then, once the proposal comes forth, we'll have a better idea.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Just another question, if I could, on the Librarian II and the Librarian I. They have similar benefits? Librarian II and the Librarian I person, they would have the similar benefits pension?
It's based all on either salary or whether or not you're getting to single help or paying things like that.
So, by having the Librarian I and then additional one, you're kind of doubling benefits, per se? Because they both would have benefits?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, in the 20% information tech, the benefits costs are also allocated in the library's budget for that 20%.
Okay.
So, that's also a factor.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll be hearing from Mr. Paul Blake, from, who will present the budget for Recreation and Parks, Pool and Tennis Funds.
Oh, good evening, everyone. It is my privilege to be with you tonight to present the budgets from the Recreation, Pool and Tennis Funds. Recreation and Parks Department takes great pride in our mission of providing programs and services to all of our residents. From preschool arts and crafts programs, educate and entertain, through a wide array of senior citizen programs and events, we work hard to be sensitive to the needs and desires of all, and we endeavor to provide the quality facilities and programs the Garden City is known for. The recreation profession, while still a young and evolving one, contributes greatly to our society, makes a positive difference in countless people's lives on a daily basis. All of us in our department take our responsibility to our residents seriously, and we strive to be responsive to the needs of all. And with that, we can move into the recreation budget, which you'll find, I believe, on page eight of your material that was submitted. Recreation Department expenses. Primarily flat for the year with a couple of exceptions, most notably the fact that, once again, we're seeing an increase in the state minimum wage, up to $16 an hour. And what that has done is float the entire boat of wages because we have to compete in the workplace for our staff. And we are trying to keep up with some of the larger municipalities and what they are paying. So far, we're hearing that the lifeguards situation is good this year. We have a large number of applicants. We've given them the proposed salaries, and they all seem comfortable with them. So, while the minimum is going to 16, lifeguards will be starting at 1650 and 17, which is comparable to some of the other jurisdictions nearby. Nassau County is starting at 18, Town of North Hempstead is starting at either 18 or 19, and the town of Hempstead is starting at 18. So, we are in the ballpark with lifeguard salaries. Some additional increases, the contractual services line has gone up. Our landscaping costs are going up a little bit, and our tree services costs are going up because we have so many more trees now that we're taking out. More trees are going to be put in. You'll see that in the capital budget and the request for tree funding. Some other expenses that are notable to be going up are special program services. We are really seeing great increases for entertainers and programming sources. It used to be that we could get a really good band or act for 2,000 or 2,500. Now, we're lucky if we can get a bar band for that. The reasonable acts are starting at 3,500, 4,500. I was quoted 8,000 today for an act, and it was just, just shook my head. I know because a couple of years ago, they would have been a $3,500 act. But everybody is trying to recover from what they didn't make during the pandemic years. So, we're seeing some increased pressure on that. The department headcount remains at 44 full-time employees, 37 of whom work in the craft-related fields, seven that are in the administrative end. And we have about 44 part-time employees year-round. And of course, that number swells quite a bit in the summer with the 80 or so people we hired at the pool and the 35 to 40 people we hired for the parks and for our maintenance department as seasonal help. That is the recreation budget in a nutshell. The operating budget. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. The next page, nine, shows Recreation Department revenues. We are down a little bit on revenues. We, we are looking at an increase overall, but a couple of them are still going down. Rental fields is down because we have made a commitment to give the fields to our local groups, not rent to outside groups unless it's a really off-hour that none of the local groups want. And in an effort to increase the quality of the turf over at St. Paul's, we are no longer renting to lacrosse and soccer tournaments that used to play on the weekends during the summer. It's only five days, but it's five days that will benefit the fields by not being used. Other revenues include miniature golf, community park snack bar, and some other facility rentals, such as the clubhouse at Community Park, some of the meeting rooms at St. Paul's campus. Moving along to capital projects. Taking a quick look at the existing projects. Many of these are ongoing projects. The St. Paul's Recreation Facility, that has been a fund that was used for some of the repairs and stabilization program. And that's really administered more by Mr. Swazi and Mr. Baroni, but it's in our department. Safety surfaces at the neighborhood parks. We have two parks completed, actually, three parks, including one at St. Paul's, and two more to go. We have to do Hemlock and Tullamore. And I believe this year, it will probably be Hemlock. That surface is in a little worse condition than the one at Tullamore. The tree management program. That one, we are going to be asking for an additional funding this year. We're asking for funding up from $75,000 to $100,000 for replacement trees. Pre-costs have gone up slightly, and we are planting more trees than ever. So, we want to make sure we have that properly funded. Renovation of the miniature golf course is essentially complete. There may be another small draw on this count of a couple of hundred dollars for some landscaping. But of that $24,000 that remains, we expect to return most of it to surplus. Athletic court renovations continue. We have renovated the tennis courts at all four parks. We are ready to do Grove Park, which is the biggest of the group, and you'll see that in the capital plan we're requesting for June 1st. Once that is done, we are in good shape and wouldn't have to address those for at least several years. Park shade structures. We did put a shade structure up at the St. Paul's playground last year. We anticipate putting a similar structure up at Nassau Haven Park. That is the one park where the playground area really has no shade trees. All of the other parks have some good-sized oak trees that give them shade, but Nassau Haven's out in the sun, and we'd like to provide some shade over there. I don't anticipate it costing $81,000. I think it's going to be more in the $60,000 range, but I'm waiting for a quote from our vendor. Senior exercise equipment is out for installation. You folks awarded a bid, and it was not $50,000. I think it was supposed to be $43,000. So, there'll be some return to surplus from that account. Fence replacement is also just about done. There may be an additional charge of 500 to 1,000 for some work at Stewart Field, but we will be returning approximately $12,000 surplus on that one. Renovation of the playground building, that is the Stewart Field bathrooms, and you will see that as an additional request on our capital request for June 1st. Those bathrooms have to be renovated. The plumbing that's in those buildings was discontinued several years ago. Finding parts for repairs has become somewhat of a scavenger hunt. And there is now a park's recreational equipment. That would be all of our trucks, large lawn mowers, monster lawn mowers, and our heavy-duty equipment. And finally, we have added a fluid hall exterior renovation. Mr. Baroni spoke of this last week at the board, meaning this is to replace the iron railings on the stairs and to take a look at the handicap access ramp as well. Those are the existing capital projects. The next slide gives you our requested capital projects for the June 1st year. Again, athletic court renovations. That is the Grove Street Tennis Court. This number is an estimate from Public Works, which involves removing the concrete tennis courts that are there now, starting from scratch with new asphalt courts. However, since we had that estimate, Mr. Baroni and Mr. Toc, village engineers, have indicated that we believe we can go right over the concrete courts with an asphalt overlay, and that should reduce this price substantially. One of the things that needs to be done at those courts is we need to get into the substructure. We have a collapsed drainage pipe, and we have to keep sending the roader guys out there to clean it out. It fills up with water pretty badly every time it rains. That will be part of this work, and we'll end up with two tennis courts. Actually, there'll be one tennis court and two pickleball courts, all with the asphalt surface covered with latex, as we have at the other four parks. Recreation equipment. Again, that is our trucks. Next year, we're looking for two trucks, a leaf vacuum, a new robotic line marker. The one that we have is now coming up on five years old. It is becoming a little bulky. There are new and better models on the market. We would like to add one to that, to our staff. It has saved us an awful lot of work and manual labor. We can set this thing up using an iPad, and it uses a GPS signal to map the fields out for us and paint all the lines. And it's accurate to within about two inches. It's phenomenal. If you come over to the Easter egg hunt on Saturday, you'll see that we now can use this machine to paint rabbits and Easter eggs on the field, which we never knew we could do, but we did it this year. We're also looking to purchase a new and improved larger stump grinder. The one that we have now can only handle small to medium-sized trees. But with the addition of our arborist, Mr. Umana, we are ready to take on bigger jobs, and we need a bigger machine. So, we would like to purchase a Vermeer stump grinder. And then, we want a couple that we would like, I want, listen to that. We would like to get a couple of attachments for our Ventrac machines. A cedar, an aerobator that will help us aerate the fields, and a ballfield groomer. These Ventrac machines have proven to be incredibly flexible. We bought them initially as a snow removal machine, but they have about 30 different attachments. They can do everything from brushing the sidewalk to cutting the verticals on your hedges, and they've proven to be very good for us. And finally, we would like to replace a 15-passenger van that was turned in five years ago and was never replaced. We have no way of transporting small groups of athletes and small groups of seniors without cranking up a big 44-passenger bus. That is the capital request for the coming year on the equipment line. Moving along, again, safety surface, neighborhood parks. We spoke about that a little bit. This is for both Tullamore and Hemlock. The tree management program, last year's request was for $75,000. This year, we are asking for $100,000. A project that is near and dear to the hearts of many is the renovation of the platform tennis courts. We have that allocated at about $83,000. I have a proposal on my desk that just came in today from RJ Riley, Green Mountain, and it looks like it's about $79,000. But let's keep the 83 in there, just in case. The rest of what we have here is starting in year 2025. And some of them, as you can tell, will depend on the future of the St. Paul's building, notably the work on the fieldhouse and fluid hall. Some of the other ones, though, particularly the park buildings, is going to need to be addressed. We have two buildings that date back to 1957. That's Hemlock and Tullamore. While the buildings are cinder block- While the buildings are cinder block, the roofs and the supporting structures are really starting to get bad and we've, we've done about as much as we can to keep them going. We would like to replace them with prefab buildings that have small office space and, um, fully accessible restrooms. We'd also like to look at where the buildings are situated and how they face. Buildings right now, if you walk into the, the building at both Nass, uh, Tullamore and Hemlock, when you're in the office, the building looks out on the field. But the entry gate is over here. You can't see it from inside the building. So I think we need to talk about the orientation of those buildings. And again, the other ones, the fluid hall, we would like to put HVAC in there. The heater in there is, uh, old and we just put a lot of money into it, so it, it should get us through another year or two. But we really should have air conditioning in there. Uh, we do a great summer concert program, as you all know, because you can hear them sometimes during the board meetings. And when we get a rain date, what do we do? Well, we move them inside to fluid hall. And let me tell you, August, inside fluid hall, hot, nobody really pops into those. So if we could get that building air conditioned, it would be a much more flexible and usable space for us. And then the field house windows and the field house restrooms, those are obviously dependent upon what happens with the main building. That is the recreation side of things. I will be happy to take questions on those items before we move into the swimming pool.
Paul, other que- question for you. Um, I remember we met with the different folks from Garden City about using, having, giving Garden City residents preferential treatment as far as reserving space for, like, outside folks. Since we've done that, have the, have the, uh, town teams taken advantage of the space as much as they'd expected? Or has it not met that, the numbers that they were talking about?
Hasn't quite met the numbers they were talking about. They did make use of the space, but as we kind of thought, the later spaces from ten o'clock on really weren't being used. Uh, I think we may see a little more use this year. There are a couple of more travel teams in lacrosse groups.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll monitor that carefully this year, but if we have another year like last year, we'll probably come to the board and recommend that we take some of that time back to rent it out.
Okay.
It doesn't really damage the fields. We had two good renters and they are still calling, asking, can we please get some time? We've set them up with a couple of days here and there. Uh, the commitment here has always been to our residents and to our resident groups, and that's what we're going to try to push as hard as we can.
Okay. Yeah, it'd be good to keep an eye on it because like we had said when we originally decided it, if they actually, if the, if the local teams actually use it and use it properly, then it's fine, right? We get tr- treatment. If on the other hand, you know, it is sitting empty and it's not going to degrade the field in any way and we can actually earn some revenue for it, we should take that, we should take advantage as much as possible.
Absolutely. And we do monitor the fields much more closely now. No secret, you folks know we've had problems down there with non-residents popping on the field, uh, coming in, popping the fence at five in the morning. Uh, they were coming from somewhere in Glendale, Queens, I think. But we also had problems in the evenings with non-permitted groups going on there. And, you know, they'll go up and they'll, they'll talk to the permitted groups and say, hey, you're not using the whole field. Can we play here for a while? We now have an employee down at that field that checks permits and checks ID's and make sure that we're not getting taken advantage of. We're, we've timed that a lot.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Sure.
All the, uh, forty-four part-time employees, I know that skyrockets during the summer. What is the bulk of what they do?
That's, that's everything from, uh, staffing our facilities to running programs. It's probably not quite forty-four in the middle of the winter, but these are the folks that staff fluid hall during the day and field house at night. They staff the playgrounds from March through November. Uh, they help out with the maintenance department. We have a couple of part-time laborers. They assist us when we have a program. They do a little bit of everything. They assist Felicia over at the field house. They also help staff community park tennis courts, which are open year-round. Um, they do a little bit of everything.
Okay. And Tullamore Park is going to be resurfaced. I take my grandchildren there all the time, so, yeah. It seems pretty good, actually, but.
Uh, well, the, the new athletic surface went down last year, uh, this,
Oh, that's on the tennis, yeah.
Safety ser- surface at Tullamore is not quite as bad as the one at Hemlock.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The playground equipment in Tullamore is worse than the equipment at Hemlock, so you'll get playground equipment first.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Try to be fair, spread the land.
Okay, alright.
Quick question, Paul. Thanks. With regard to, uh, tell me if this is the appropriate time to talk about landscaping, your plan for the village. Um, you've, you've talked about a, a separate plan for Central and then how you can help us address what's going on in Seventh Street, Seven A, and Seven S, et cetera. Thank you.
Sure. We have done a couple of things, uh, as you have heard. When we went out to bid for our landscape contract this year, we did remove the central section as a bid part of that package. And we have allocated a four-man team that will be working in the central section five days a week. And it will be doing all of the tasks that our contractor had been doing. Plus, there will be mulching and trimming and pruning, picking up litter, keeping things clean, washing benches, doing all the tasks that they used to do when these crews were in the different sections. In terms of the, the rest of the landscaping, um, we just went out to bid. You folks all got your agendas. And you saw that we have a new vendor. Uh, the low bid for the landscaping this year was with Brightview Landscaping. They, uh, were the low bidder by about twenty-five thousand dollars. They are, uh, one of the country's biggest landscape companies. Uh, they currently work at the Wyndham and the Garden City Hotel. They do exceptional work there. Uh, we will have them in our office, both their field supervisor and the one. They will meet with my staff and with Mr. Gordon, who is our contractor specialist. And they will be given their marching orders as to what is acceptable and what is unacceptable. In terms of helping to keep the central district clean, we have already spoken with Mr. Gordon and, uh, he will be getting two seasonal employees assigned to him. They will be stationed here at Village Hall. We have space in the garage in the back where we can keep their equipment. They will be available to Mr. Gordon to move around the central section, use them as he sees fit. If they need to pick trash on Seventh Street, they'll pick trash. If they need to clean the gazelle, if they touch up painting, they'll do that. If they need to pick a parking field clean, they'll do that. So we're really putting some resources into the central section. And I know Mr. Baroni has plans to bring a couple of bodies on as well, so I'm thinking we're going to see a lot of improvement in the plan there. As far as the landscaping in the central section, we are pleased to be working on a plan for the library. Uh, Marian will be happy to hear that, I know. Uh, both Steve Barnage and Joe Yamana are working on drawing something up. Uh, we will also have the usual display of hanging baskets on Seventh Street and Franklin, the beautiful petunias. Uh, the bubble gum, as they call it, pink, white, and purple. And any of the beds that are our responsibility will be planted and groomed all summer long. We will be changing the landscaping at Stewart Bus by the train station. All of that ratty-looking mulch is being removed and we're going to put in some nice green grass for you and it should make it look a lot nicer. So those are the plans right now. And of course, subject to editing as people along, but that's the, that's the bottom line.
Thank you.
Hey, Paul, quick question on the platform tennis renovation. Is that going to include all of the courts and will it include the heating systems bu- below as well?
It includes all four courts. It includes tightening of all the screens and inspecting all the heaters, which all work.
Okay.
Awesome.
Okay. Why don't we move along to the pool? And while we do that, we take this time to introduce our new assistant superintendent of recreation, who is going to, uh, be the pool director this summer, uh, Mr. Andy Hill. He comes to us with great experience in most of the things that we do on a daily basis. Uh, he was with Aviator Sports, which is down at Gateway National Recreation Center. So he has some good experience working with government and doing a lot of programming, which is kind of what we do here. And he's been here about six weeks and he's already made a nice difference in our offices. It's good to almost be fully staffed again.
Welcome onboard. Glad to have you.
Do you want to grab the mic?
Want me to?
Sure. Don't take it with you, but.
I'll be happy to give the microphone up.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was gonna, uh,
Oh, no, Paul's doing this.
Gonna present, I'm sorry. Spit it out.
You could do it. We went through it, Tim.
Okay. Sorry, man, sorry.
Put him on the spot. Yeah, put him on the spot, why not?
Looking at the pool expense budget, this is on page thirteen in your package. Again, most of the lines are not really changed too much from last year. With, again, the exception that the increasing minimum wage is putting upward pressure on all of the salaries that were paid down at the pool. Uh, budget is about four percent up. A lot of that is salary-related expenses and, uh, higher benefits and tax rates. This budget does include the repair of that sewer line last summer, which I think worked out to be close to forty thousand dollars. And was quite an extensive repair, but it was done correctly and completely and, uh, it is working very well now. Uh, other than that, we are doing pretty well on our other expenditures. We got a good quote from our chlorine company. They re- are renewing their bid for chlorine at last year's prices, which is a very nice surprise because chlorine generally industry-wide is up about twenty percent this year. So with, with that, that's a big expense because we go through about fifteen to twenty thousand gallons of chlorine every year. Besides that, everything is pretty much as you see. There are no real surprises in this budget. Moving along to the pool revenue. We again show the pool being cash positive. Um, we did have a sag in our membership numbers last spring and we attribute that to the poor weather that we had in April and May. It was just kind of damp and rainy for a good portion of the spring and it never really heated up. And going back, you know, this fifty-some odd years that I've been involved here, the main driver for selling pool memberships is hot weather in the spring. When we get hot weather, we exceed our projections. When we get chilly weather, we don't quite make them. The ones that were down last year were family memberships and surprisingly, seniorses and memberships were down a little bit. We think that may be a, an ongoing lingering result from COVID. Uh, but we are hoping that those numbers will rebound. This year's numbers are based on the same membership numbers as last year with a slight rate increase. And I think, uh, Mrs. Wu said the rates are up about four percent. And if you would like, I have the rates, the proposed rates with me and I'll be happy to give them to you. For a family, the rate for twenty-twenty-four will be five hundred forty dollars. It was five twenty-five last year, so we're looking at fifteen dollars or about three and a half percent. Family of two is going to be three seventy-seven. It was three sixty-five last year. Senior couple is three forty-seven, up from three thirty-five. An individual is three oh-three, up from two ninety-three. A senior individual is two twenty-nine, up from two twenty-one. And a non-resident caregiver is two sixty-two, up from two fifty-two. School district family, there are about seventy families whose homes are in the school district but not in the village, but we extend them to courtesy of joining the pool. That rate is up to six forty-five from a rate last year of six twenty-three. Again, the pool remains cash positive and thanks to some good revenue years the past couple of years and some good fiscal management and some great advice from Mrs. Wu and her staff, we are trimming the village contribution to the pool fund by about five hundred thousand dollars this year. It's dropping from eight hundred something to three hundred something. So the, the management plan is working. The, give people good service, a quality facility, and give them value for their dollar and you'll do fine. And that's what we're trying to do with the pool. We show also no increase in any of our guest fees. We are holding those at fifteen dollars for adults, twelve dollars for children and seniors. That is the revenue side of the pool. Real quickly, capital projects. We do have two projects coming up this year earmarked for June first beginning. The first one is the big one and that is to replace the now thirty-year-old water slide. It had an expected life of fifteen to twenty years.
Mm-hmm.
So we've done real well by that slide. Um, and honestly, it was just very aggressive maintenance from the day that it was put in. Waxing it constantly, getting the fiberglass recoded when needed and maintaining it in good repair has really paid off. We have selected a new design for the slide. Uh, we bounced that around to Recreation Commission a couple of months ago and we came up with a very nice design for the slide. It's a little different than what we have now, but it's going to be a lot of fun for the kids. And Mr. Baroni and his staff have already engaged, uh, a couple of people to get proposals for developing the plans and specs. We have selected a company whose slide we like and that project is well underway. It is a tricky matter to replace a water slide because we have to start with the paperwork June first. And the estimate is three hundred and three days to do the project beginning to end, which would put us towards the middle of April next year with a June opening. So there's not a lot of slide room here. You like that, Paul? And, uh, we're hopeful that we can get this, because we have good people working on it. Uh, Andrew Toc has been doing a great job on it. The other capital project that's coming up is to replace the, uh, five-to-twelve-year-old playground equipment. If you're looking at the playground, this is the one on the right. Uh, that blue and red unit has been in there since we put it in in nineteen ninety-nine and it is about due to be replaced. We did close to sixteen thousand dollars worth of repairs to it over the last two years to keep it up to code and keep it safe for our kids. So it's time for that to go as well. Those are the capital projects for the pool. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the pool or I'll throw them to this guy and you can figure it out.
I have two questions. First one, what will happen this summer with the water slide?
It'll be in use from day one. It's ready to rock and roll.
The new one you're talking about that you're putting, the current existing one?
It'll stay in use this summer.
Okay.
Okay. There had been issues, hadn't there been with getting parts, but you're all set?
Ago, we replaced the pump and yes, it was an issue because the slide is so old. The only pump they could find was in Vancouver and had to come in by boat. So that was replaced. That was taken care of and the slide ran very successfully all last summer. We don't anticipate any problems this summer.
Great. The one other question I had was, uh, the hours, and I know this was an issue, I think two summers ago, complaints about that early end time for people who worked and wanted to get a swim in. Um, I think it had been closing at eight. You were able to extend it. What's the, with this budget, how is it looking for this summer?
We're looking fine for this summer so long as the school district starts after Labor Day. And we anticipate they will because Labor Day is very early this year, September second. What hurt us two years ago was high school starting the Thursday before Labor Day. And, you know, at that time of year, all the college kids have gone back to school and we're working with the staff of high school kids. And they just can't work more than a certain hours in the day and there's not all that many of them. So we did have to trim the hours and the decision was made. We get about thirty people in the pool from eight to nine, but we get about a hundred and fifty people in the pool early in the morning. So we cut the evening hours. If we were forced to do this again, we would probably stagger one day early, one day late. But we don't anticipate that problem this year.
Thank you.
Right. What is the total membership? Well, what was it last summer for, for all of them? Family, seniors?
It was in the neighborhood of twenty-one hundred members.
Oh, okay. Alright, that's, that's good.
Seventeen hundred family members. Um, and the other ones are in the, the two hundred range. One is in the one fifty range. I can send those over to you tomorrow though.
That'd be great.
I'm having my fingertips.
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.
Well, I just had a quick one. A, a year or two ago, there was an issue with the, uh, snack bar. And was that a, a couple of years ago or, or was that closer to COVID time? Remember there was a problem with, um, the, the individual that rented the snack bar? Am, am I not remembering correctly?
So, um, trust me, Finnerman, the snack bar operator has been the same fellow since nineteen eighty-six. Uh, John Parks from D and J. Um, it's been a, a relatively.
Never an issue.
Ooh, never an issue.
Thank you.
He puts, he puts, um, money above and beyond his payment into the snack bar. He, last year he put in, uh, computerized menu boards, which stressed it up a little bit. He's putting in a couple of small awnings over the, uh, service windows this year. He's always willing to meet with us and, and help us out with programs, providing discounted meals when we have a special event going on. Um, he's been a good part.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the final budget that we have responsibility for then, this is the Kennedy's Enterprise Fund. This budget again, the seventh two budgets is basically flat. It's not a lot of changes. The only, uh, increase we look at is again, the increase in the minimum wage, which does put some upward pressure on our part-time staff. We do have extra expenses from the, uh, depreciation relating to the upcoming replacement of the fabric on the structure. That is, uh, going to get underway again right if, we believe in, in early June. And it is, uh, quite a large project. I think we have it budgeted at one point three million. I think we have it budgeted at one point three million. So that will be, I believe, a bonded project, and, uh, Mrs. Wu can speak to that better than I can. Um, but again, not a lot of changes. The only pro- changes we see in the, in the tennis fund are really on the revenue side, which is down a little bit due to an anticipated two-month closing of the facility. Uh, it will take some time for the facility to put back in service. Uh, in addition to changing the vinyl on the building, they will have to be bringing in a lot of heavy equipment. So there will be a restoration period of the actual court surfaces. And that actually comes at a good time because that has not been done for many years, and it is time to remove all of the hard true, go down to the stone blend and start at the bottom and bring them back up. Uh, the courts are in good shape right now. We have, uh, dedicated an employee to working there and only there. He works the night shift, he works till eleven o'clock. So he's in there after the building is closed, watering the courts, grading them, smoothing them, tamping them down. Uh, that has been a, a godsend to us. The courts have, have not looked this good in years. Uh, again, fifteen percent decrease in the, uh, proposed revenue and mainly to the closing for two years. And the only capital project we have ongoing at the tennis center is the replacement of that fabric. If you have any questions, I would be more than happy to answer them if I can. Okay, thank you so much for your attention tonight. Thank you for your support for the years. Um, I have the best job in the world, and I know it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul.
Okay, we'll just continue. Let's do. Um, we'll just continue and review the, uh, changes that have been, uh, voiced over in the previous three budget meetings, and there were only, uh, a couple of them, very minor changes. Uh, one change was the transfer of the payroll services, the ADP payroll services from the administration department to the finance department, um, to follow the, the move of the function that moved to finance. So that's just the transfer of eighty thousand dollars from administration into finance, net zero change. And then the second change is the, uh, elimination of one open labor position within the DPW street, street maintenance department. Uh, the, uh, Superintendent of DPW, uh, you know, upon further review of his budget, determined that this open position no longer needs to be filled. So that's a reduction in the salary line of about forty-five thousand dollars. Um, so when we look at the overall headcount for the village, that's also reduced by one. Um, overall, DPW had eighty full-time positions, and now it has seventy-nine. So village-wide, we are at two hundred and fifty-nine full-time positions, um, versus the previous tentative budget of two sixty. When we look at the overall, uh, general fund budget, um, the tentative budget went down, of course, by this forty-five thousand dollars. So we are now at seventy million, uh, point, seventy point two million dollars, which is year-over-year a one point forty-five percent increase in expenditures. This is being funded by, uh, surplus of two point eight million, and this is where we reduce the need to, uh, use forty-five thousand dollars of additional surplus because of the reduction in the headcount. Uh, estimated other revenue stays the same at thirteen million. The tax levy, we kept the same with a two percent, uh, tax levy increase. Um, so overall, we're at, uh, the seventy point nine million, including the transfer to the reserve. Um, currently, the, uh, tentative assessed valuation, taxable assessed valuation, um, is being worked on by the assessor, but it is anticipated to stay close to the number that we have here in the tentative budget. Um, the final assessed valuation will be, uh, completed by Monday. So we'll have the exact, uh, implied tax rate, but it's expected to be close to this fifty point ninety-one. Fifty dollars and ninety-one cents per a hundred dollars of assessed valuation. Um, so, uh, if the board doesn't have any additional changes, comments, or questions, our next meeting on Monday, April first, will be to hold the public hearing of the budget and, uh, to, for the board to also adopt this budget. Um, so the, the floor is open for the board to, uh, make any changes, comments, or questions at this time.
How many part-timers do we have, Irene?
In total, village-wide?
Yeah.
I'm not sure about that. Uh, I'll have to go back and check.
Terrific, thanks.
I know seas- uh, you know, during the season, there's hundreds of, of part-timers, correct? Right, in the peak season, there's hundreds of them. Yeah.
Okay.
This is sort of a question both for Mr. Blake and Mr. Barone. It appears as if the central area is going to be a Venn diagram, partly covered by DPW and partly covered by parks. I still haven't figured out why your department is cleaning the streets, but we'll. I know, it's just, that's one of the things we just accept and never ask any more questions. As my mother used to say, when I asked her why, she said, "Why is a crooked letter?" And that's the only answer I ever got.
Sure.
So who is actually going to monitor the collective efforts of those people on that project?
Well, I believe that, uh, on the DPW side, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, it would be Barti Costanzo and Benny Patrissi. Uh, and from my side, it would be Tom Gordon, and they would be reporting to, uh, Mr. Barone and myself.
Okay.
They work well together. We have, we have really good cooperation between our departments. Uh, our maintenance foreman, uh, Sam Simone, uh, calls and talks to Bart almost every day, and, uh, things get addressed very nicely between our two departments. The level of cooperation with DPW is outstanding, uh, and I expect it will continue to be outstanding.
Excellent.
All right, I guess we can open it up to any questions in the room. Anyone in the room with any questions on the presentation? Yes.
Thank you. Um, Robert Hurs, one-one-one Cherry Valley Avenue. Um, my question, well, um, it partly relates to the library, and then it also relates more broadly to the overall village. And I really wonder about, like, the actual need for the library to increase the full-time headcount by one. And also, since it's getting point two of a headcount because sharing the new IT person, which I fully understand, um, the, you know, library really should have seventeen point two people instead of seventeen. My broad question is, why is this increase in headcount necessary, especially considering the future deployment of generative AI, which will have profound implications for how librarians and other professionals do their work in the future? And it's expected to result in a substantial increase in productivity, which, if managed properly, should facilitate a reduction in headcount. Um, and I have heard nothing, I've gone to most of the meetings, but I have heard nothing from the village about its plans to utilize generative AI to increase the productivity of not only the library, but many of the finance, administration, other functions of the, um, village's workforce. Um, and as a point of reference, generative AI has been all the rage in the private sector for about the last one and a half years, and you're starting to see some of its effects. So I just recommend that the village start thinking about this before people are hired because it's very expensive for the village to, um, terminate people. And, um, in general, that typically doesn't happen. So, um, so I just wanted to bring that up for something to be thought about. And I know this is in the early, early stages of, um, generative AI, and it's expected to be more profound than the effects that the internet had. Um, and so I just bring that up as for something for, um, the administration to do more, more work on. That's all that I have, thank you. And, and Mayor, I'll give you an article on this at, at the end of the meeting.
Thank you. So thank you for your comments. I don't know if we want to, um, rather than me relaying it because I have heard quite a bit about the reason for the increase in headcount. I don't know if the library wants to give a little more, um, explanation as to the need for the increase in headcount.
Thank you. Um, there's an expression in library land, and I'm going to paraphrase it because I didn't bring it with me, but it's like, Google can bring you a million answers, but a librarian can bring you the right one. Uh, computers have expanded in their capability, and in some cases, the library is one of the areas that we know so much about that because we really work intrinsically with computers all the time. However, uh, there's still never going to be any replacement for having a live conversation with a master's degree professional who's going to ask you what book you read last and why you liked it, and who is going to ask you, uh, what did you like about that book? Or what stumbling blocks did you have with that homework assignment? Let me see if I can find another resource to help you. This is what librarians do every day, and that's just the desk part of the job. The real reason I'm pitching library, an extra librarian for the library, is because of the outcry from members of the village board and from members of the community to have more library programs. I extensively researched our community libraries that residents come to me all the time talking about what's going on at Jericho, what's going on in Shelter Rock and, uh, other towns like that. And they have more staff, and they're producing way more programs and with a bigger program budget. And this is why those were the fundamentals of my requests. I've been asked by the, uh, current members of this board and to increase library programming over the last two or three years. And I can still remember a meeting with Charlie Kelly talking about it and how important it was to him. And we want to provide that level of service. But what a lot of people forget is that we currently have four operating public lib- with librarian centers in the library, the computer lab, and three departments, teen, children, and adults. We're open for sixty-five hours of the week during the regular year and sixty-one hours of the week during the summer. That includes four nights and Saturday and Sunday. You have to have that librarian, that full-time librarian closing. That means that now they're not working in the morning and vice versa. So it stretches the staff thin. And this is the reason why, I'm not saying that we're stretched thin, that we can't provide, but we're at a lower scale than we want to be and that the residents want us to be. We would like to provide, instead of three hundred or four hundred programs a year, we'd like to provide eight hundred programs a year. We can't get there with the resources we have. And I've been asked this by, like I said, the trustees on this current board in the past and my liaisons in the past, and this is what the community wants. And this is why I asked for one librarian and twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you, much better expressed than I could have done it. We have, it is something we've all heard about, the, um, programming, uh, need for more robust programming at the library. And, um, thank you for so eloquently describing that, and hopefully that answers your question. Any other questions from anyone in the room? Any questions from anyone on Zoom? All right, there be, be no further questions. Thank you all for coming this evening. Is there a motion to close the meeting? All in favor?
Second.
Adjourned. Thank you for all the great work you've done.
Thank you.